Okay, um, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And let's get to work, because everybody I'm sure has many other things that they might be trying to do tonight. So we. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the June fifth twenty twenty four meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Anybody have anything in here that looks amiss? Looked good to me, but I always appreciate a second set of eyes. All good? Okay, all those in favor? Hi, Katie, Kathy?
I, I wasn't there, but I can, I watched it, so I can, I can vote, wasn't that what we said?
Yeah, that was what I learned.
Yeah, so I, that's fine.
Okay, great. Uh, alright, motion passes five zero. Okay, new business, we have the Unit C memorandum of agreement ratification. Uh, so Lisa, I'm. What I, or whoever, um, you know, I know, obviously, we discussed this in executive session, and then I don't know if it's worth just kind of highlighting again. Um, kind of what the headlines were, because this is essentially just the approval of what, um, there were no changes since that time, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So this is just the vote of what has previously been shared. Um, which included, um, some financial, uh, commitments, and I don't actually have the MOU in front of me, so I apologize.
I have it in front of me, there were no other changes in the, um. It's basically the same MOU that you saw before the, um, unit, um, C was voted on it themselves, so this is just the ratification of that contract, public vote.
In public, okay. Okay, does any, does anyone have any questions or, or comments before we do that?
I just wanna say, I sat in on two of the meetings, and it was just, um, I thought it was really amicable and went exceptionally well. So kudos to Danielle and Lisa and everybody.
Yeah, and I know, obviously, this, um, this is a challenging thing a- across the board, and I know we're hearing about it in a lot of other communities, so that is really great that it, it ended that way, um, and everybody sort of feels like we're in a good place, so I think that's great. Um, alright, so can I have a motion to approve the Unit C memorandum of agreement ratification?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, motion passes five zero. Alright, Lisa, the food services fee adjustment, do you wanna talk about this before we?
Yep, so I'll give you a little high level, um, kind of overview of what's been happening since I came on board, I've had a number of conversations with the folks from Chartwells, um, in the last two years that I've been here around our meals, um, costs. Um, and for two, two things, so I do wanna remind everyone that, um, the state has, um, implemented and budgeted for universal free meals, which is one breakfast and one lunch that follows the healthy meal guideline, um, for all students in the district. Um, with that, that does not cover, um, second meals or à la carte things, extra drinks, or if you don't get the meal as it is for the healthy, you know, um, pyramid, those end up becoming à la carte items. So with that said, over the last couple of years, um, Chartwells, we've had a co- conversation with the Chartwells around our costs, um, in terms of the cost of materials and labor, and what we are charging for staff and for students as their uh, staff meals or students à la carte items. Um, and so each year, the state requires us to assess our lunch pricing using a paid equity um, tool to assure, ensure our rates are aligned with federal and state reimbursement rates. So ideally, are, we would not be under the state or federal reimbursement rate, but would be at or above. Um, so our average meal price is two dollars and seventy-two cents right now, and that falls significantly below the current reimbursement rate of three dollars and fifty-six cents, and an anticipated rate of three dollars and seventy cents for the fiscal twenty-five school year. Um, in order to meet compliance and sustain our program effectively, um, the recommendation, I have a recommendation for you, um, in terms of adjusting our school lunch fees based on recommendations received from Kelly Prince, who's our Director of Food uh, and Nutrition Services from Chartwells. Um, in the packet was a memo which outlines our proposed schedule for increasing the meal prices over the next three years. Um, we did not want to do this as a, um, just a one-time, like, do the adjustment become compliant now, um, because it is such a significant jump from where we are to where we should be. So we decided to take a phased-in approach, um, for the meals as a whole. Um, a couple of things to consider also is that, um, those food costs and inflation costs have been ri- risen, right, excuse me, rose by over thirteen percent in the past four years alone. Um, and then second meal usage, approximately, uh, one hundred and fifty second meals are purchased daily totaling twenty-six thousand meals annually, um, suggesting that there would be a minimal impact on free and reduced students who may face challenges with account balances. Um, we do acknowledge the concern for students who are eligible for free and reduced-priced meals, it's important to note that these adjustments would not impact the universal free school meals program, again, which covers the cost of one lunch and one breakfast, which includes a fruit, a vegetable, whole grains, as per, um, we follow the National School Lunch and Breakfast Programs. Um, this will only affect à la carte items, second meals, and adult meals, which are generally not utilized by, um, these students due to financial constraints. Um, and then just a point of reference, Chandler does not currently offer à la carte options, therefore, they'd be exempted from uh, these proposed adjustments.
And Alden does, Alden offers à la carte options?
Yes. It's like their ice cream.
It's ice, well, I was gonna ask.
It could be anything, right? If there's ice cream, there's snacks, there's.
I know about the snacks, I didn't know there was like à la carte lunch items, it's mostly just other food, is what you're saying?
Usually, for the, for the younger kids, I think that's kind of, you'll, you'll see less, um, second meal options for those kids, you'll see them as the kids get older, um.
Yeah.
But yeah, yeah.
These prices are for the meals, those à la carte items stay as they are?
Uh, the à la carte items, these are for the meals, I will, uh, hold on one second. So this is specifically related to the meals, yes.
Actual core meal, and then what about fun lunch? Is that also a meal that fits in these, those three other alternative options that are offered, or whatever they are?
I am unfamiliar with fun lunch.
Oh.
What is fun lunch?
Well, they always have one core lunch item, I'm just, I'm imagining as a parent, I'm thinking about these questions, but I'm looking at fee increases and trying to understand what it impacts and what it doesn't, so there's hot lunch, hot lunch, I call it, or whatever the main one is. And then they have these alternatives, um, in case kids maybe don't like whatever that is, but they're the healthy ones, there's sun butter, there nacho fun lunch, still not sure.
So as long as the meal incorporates the three items, the, the fruit, the vegetable, the grain, um, as long as those three items are part, are purchased, that is considered a meal. So they choose whatever the hot lunch is, they don't want the grilled cheese for that day, or the breakfast for lunch that day, and they decide they want the sun butter or peanut butter sandwich instead, and still get the carrot sticks and the apple, that qualifies.
It's an alternative lunch option.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, understood.
This is probably not relevant to this, but I did just wanna comment on the fact that the, from the K to twelve insights, one of the biggest, I think, feedback we received was how disappointed most students are in our lunches, and I'm not, I know that's not related to this conversation necessarily, but I just think if we're talking about increasing prices and things like that, Danielle or Lisa or anybody, is there, uh, is there any talk about how we might approach that feedback, I guess?
Yes, we are definitely, I met with Kelly Prince as soon as, um, the feedback came in before I started sharing it out, and um, she was really appreciative of the feedback and the opportunity to, um, take some input from parents and from students about what, um, sorts of lunch items, sort of lunch items they would like to see. There was definitely, um, concerns shared from our parents about the nutrition value of some of the lunches, and so I think Kelly, as our Food Services Director, is well aware. And I think we, um, hadn't been able to fit her in attending a school committee meeting before the end of the year, and so I think we can certainly have her in early on. Just to talk about, um, what changes, if any, she's making to, um, address the concerns that were shared on the feedback survey. And I know she shared with us that she is really hoping to get more input from students on a, um, at all levels about what lunch items they like and what items they'd like to see, so um, and from parents, we can certainly solicit some feedback about, um, healthy versus not healthy choices that they'd like to see eliminated or added.
Okay, thank you.
I think it would be great, the timing of this is sort of, um, ideal from my perspective in terms of sharing it um, with the community, because I think, obviously, I can't imagine a lot of people are gonna be paying attention to this until the fall, and that's okay. Um, I think the critical piece from my perspective here is that this is, the base lunch is free, this is for the additional lunches, if second lunch or, or all those things, so I don't have, personally, I don't have any issues, um, with what's in front of us, but I think it might be really great to do a tandem presentation of we, the district, have voted on this, and we've made this decision, you know, as, for all the reasons that, um, Lisa has outlined here in a more public way in an open meeting, but then follow that up with Kelly Prince kind of sharing, and by the way, given that information, we wanted to kind of address the pieces, so if we can, I'll make sure that we put that on the agenda for sort of the very beginning um, of the next school year.
I'm sorry, did I cut you off? Kelly is prepared, will be prepared to talk about all of it.
And anything we decide in summer meetings, when there may not be people that are, um, able to attend or thinking that we're even having meetings, we'll make sure that any school committee decisions over the summer, um, are well communicated, that we don't just have a decision made tonight and then not follow up with our families, so we'll make sure that families are well aware of any changes or news that took place after school ended.
Yeah, and as I said, I think this, given that it only impacts additional lunch, it's a little bit less sensitive, I, I would, I would think, but maybe I'm missing, I'm not realizing what feedback we might get.
No, I agree, I was just using that as like a segue to ask about if, like, what that plan was, but I completely agree, I think what we're presenting here is not directly correlated to that, so.
Okay, Matt, Kelly, Kathy, do you guys have any?
Well, we're, this, this, this part of the discussion is just on the addendum, right?
Versus the contract extension, sorry for asking. Yes, do we vote? Yes, we are voting those separately, so just the adjustment, fee adjustment.
Yep, nah, I don't have any feedback.
Okay, great, um, are we ready for a vote? Do we feel good about that? Can I have a motion to approve the third food services fee adjustment as recommended by the district?
So moved.
Competition, alright, can I, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, five zero, awesome. Alright, next, we have the Food Services Agreement Addendum, which I'll let Lisa talk about, and then I think, Matt, you have some thoughts.
Okay, um, so a little background information, last year, our district successfully completed a our request for proposal process, um, utilizing Desi's new RFP process and contract tools. And through the con, through that process, Chartwells was the winning bidder and awarded, um, the contract, which uh, by design from Desi, was a one-year contract with the option to extend it for an additional four years. Um, so we have completed the first year of this contract, and Chartwells has consistently met our expectations, they commit to providing high-quality and nutritious meals um, to our students, um, they are very responsive to our district needs, and we have a very strong uh, partnership with them, marked by their professionalism, flexibility, and dedication to enhancing our food services program, um, and given this, and I would like to propose that um, the school committee vote to support extending the contract for the additional, um, period of time. I, I will preface this by saying, I'm not sure if this is something that has been done in the past, but it's always better to cover our bases, um, which is why I'm presenting this to you today.
Uh, what's the alternative to just saying, yes, let's go forward, like, what are our choices?
So, so our choices would be, we would have to go out to, to bid again. Um, and Kathy, just for a little background information, um, the process that Desi put in place was intended to streamline the overall RFP process so that every school district that outsources for food ma- food service management companies is on the same playing field, and that the vendors that are bidding, it, it's intended to be advantageous for the districts, um, and the vendors that are bidding, uh, have to follow the process, it's a pretty stringent process. Um, there's not a lot of flexibility, we, um, going through the training to kind of prepare for this, I had walked away from the initial impression that we would be able to do some customization to the contractor, to the RFP, to meet the needs of the school district, and so we had to, um, work closely with Desi to be able to do that, so, for example, um, we had a couple of additional criteria in our, um, requirements that weren't part of the RFP, so we built those in as a contract, uh, as a RFP, um, addendum or amendment. Uh, the other thing that we had at the time that we were going through this exercise was, we didn't know for certain if the state was going to um, support universal free meals again, and so we had asked that our bidders also provide two price proposals, one that would show us what it would look like if we had universal free meals, or, and one that would show us what it would look like going back to the old, um, the old format, pre-pandemic, um, with no free meals, and so when we went through this exercise, we had three vendors attend the walkthrough. Uh, one of those vendors did not bid, um, and they, nor did they say why they weren't bidding. The other vendor bid but was new to the market and didn't follow the, um, RFP requirements. And then Chartwells, um, did, they were the successful bidder, obviously going through, and they had the most advantageous proposal, um, but also they did it correctly. Um, so we were, we were in a situation to award, uh, Chartwells the contract. So if we, we did not go forward with Chartwells, we would have to go through the RFP process again.
How long did that take you guys, the, when you went through it?
It takes, it takes like a month, all told.
Okay.
Um, it de- it depends on how much time you give, because, um, there's a few different components. The longest part of our process, I find, although I think it would be better going through it a second time, or at some point in the future, was really a lot of the back and forth with Desi and making sure that everything was exactly the way that they wanted it.
Right.
Um, because for them, they didn't want, they wanted to be able to just go through and essentially check boxes. Um, and that's where the customization or the additional requirements became a challenge. Um, and then through the process, you have to do advertising, so you've got timeframe for that, and you have to, and we had a walkthrough, which we would require people to attend anyway. Um, but we do a mandatory walkthrough, so they can see what our kitchens look like and kind of what our space looks like as a whole.
Okay, and, and sorry, my last question for now, um, is Kelly, Kelly employed by Chartwells or Duxbury?
Kelly is employed by Chartwells, she is, she has been, um, I think we are her only district that she's been with, and Chartwells has been our food service management company, um, consistently over the last fifteen or so years. And Kelly has been with us just, if not that long, just about that long.
I guess, just kind of to Katie's point and my own personal experience, I, I I've gotta believe, they either have to improve the, the quality, like multiple expired milk stories this year, um, which is the fritza included. Um, I, as I understand it, lunch, I I'm just having a hard time thinking we should just go ahead and use them again without some, and, and I understand she has a report she's gonna present to us in September, but I, I would be interested in seeing other options at some point, if it's not this year, then taking a bigger look at it. The following year, cuz I, I just feel like the quality has not been to expectations that the community has for what their kids are getting, whether it's paid for or not, and being on either side of receiving free lunch or prior to COVID when lunch wasn't free, I do not know why, maybe my kids are eating more, but the amount of money that's going out of my, I had to stop the auto withdrawal because of the amount of money that was coming out of both Alden and middle school accounts repeatedly, and so I, I've gotta believe they're not taking advantage of the free lunch that's available, and I don't know how many people are and what parents will say if, what they're already seeing come out of their accounts every month.
Lisa, can I ask you a few questions to, um, Kathy's points? Do, does the school committee only have the choice of extending the contract for four years, or do they have the option tonight to extend it for a shorter period of time in order to potentially give Chartwells the opportunity to address some of the feedback? That's my first question, and then my other question is, shouldn't parents have the ability to see exactly what their children are purchasing instead of just getting a bill, and I would hope that it's clear enough that they can see that it was, um, chips or a second hot lunch that was purchased, so that they can talk to their children about what they're allowed to purchase at school or not?
Yep, so, um, to answer the first question, yes, it doesn't have to be for the four years, um, we can certainly um, do it for a shorter time period, um, and that, then that way we can have Chartwells kind of address these things, come in and do their presentation and what have you. Um, as for the purchases, uh, parents can definitely see what their kids are purchasing, um, through my school bucks, which is where I believe uh, the payments are made, um, so I, I can use this example as myself, because we use my school bucks where my daughter goes to school. Um, you can log in and you can see kind of what they're doing, um, typically, in my case, it was ice cream or snacks or meals for my daughter's friends. Um, and so that money goes very fast when, when kids are on the snack wagon and the chips wagon and the, you know, um, because they, because in, in truth, the ki- and we see this everywhere, it's not uncommon, kids don't care for the free meals, or they don't care for all the components of the meal. And so if they don't take all components of the meal, it changes from the full, the full meal option to an à la carte option. So, um, you know. Yeah, so that's, so it is strongly encouraged, I, I've said this to my own child, like, you have this option for this free meal, get all of it, give your friends the extra piece of fruit or whatever, if you don't want it, um, or throw it away, which is not my preference, um, but certainly they can do that, um, but my, my recommendation is like, if you wanna get the whole thing, pass on to your friends, whatever you're not gonna eat. Um, but it does change whether it is a full meal that qualifies, and it, I think the terminology is the eligible meal versus the à la carte option.
It sounds like we need to do a better job letting the community know that that's what's happening, if potentially they're seeing large lunch balances, and also we need to do a better job telling the kids that take the carrot sticks, even if you don't eat them, because otherwise you're getting charged for separate items, kids might not know what à la carte means, and it's nice that our kids are being generous to purchase um, lunch for their friends on their parents' account, um, but we should also be really careful about, um, how we direct kids through the lunch line, so that parents aren't having surprises about what large deductions.
That would probably be a great communication with, like, back to school, I had no idea about any of that, my children only eat school lunches cuz they're treats, um, so, but I think I don't wanna put any more onus on the cafeteria workers who are already juggling a lot, I'm sure, but I think if we could make families aware of that in, like, bold letters at the beginning of year, maybe, just to up that communication, um, you know, it's not the school's responsibility to, like, tell kids not to buy their friends lunch, cuz that's not, you know, that's not your job, that's parents' job, so, um, yeah, I think if, if we can work on that, but I also just second what Kathy said, if there's an option to maybe do this for another year in hopes that we see some changes, um, I think that would be, that would be great.
I don't think, yeah, and this is only my own experience with this, my kids do buy hot lunch, I, I, I do wanna, I'm curious about that, from a, from a budget perspective and a money perspective, both for the district and for people paying, um, because I'm fairly certain that my children don't always take the full meal, and all I see charged is snacks and things. So I'm not sure that that's necessarily true, I think if they take the main lunch, and then, uh, that seems to be fine to Kathy's point, I that's more of a community conversation, or a commu- maybe a communication with Chartwells around, it seems a little crazy to me that K to five, we just let kids.
This is gonna be law.
And we do. So that's kind of a problem, I think, and I wonder if that's a conversation, conversation with Chartwells to say, is there an ability for us to manage that a little bit differently, so that kids can't buy five bags of chips and ice cream when they're seven? Um, on their parents' dime, and there's no way for parents to control that either, you put money in the account, and then it goes the way it goes. So that's, that's a separate conversation, um, but maybe a little, a little bit of a communication piece, if we're saying we're then gonna raise prices, um, for some additional, the additional meals. Um, I also appreciate this idea of a one-year, it seems a little bit, um, in my opinion, irresponsible to renew a four-year contract when we've just seen the feedback we've seen, and again, take it with a grain of salt, all those things, we have to give them an opportunity to respond to that, but from a fiscal responsibility perspective, it feels a little bit um, off to me, to, to just go with that, without knowing what their reaction to that is. And then my final question is just around cost in general, and hearing a little bit about the fluctuation in quality of food, and I think that was a post-COVID problem and a supply chain issue, but I think that's mostly what, what I have been hearing is like, Danielle, I think you said this, the pizza at the beginning there is amazing, and then for some reason halfway through the year, something changes, and obviously, that stuff is going to happen, I wonder, though, if that's what's fueling a lot of the feedback we got about particular things, and I'm curious to hear from Chartwells, if nothing else, about are they switching to get best bang for their buck, and maybe not, we're not getting the same quality of food we might like, and does that mean that the answer is, well, that's fine, but then the contract costs more? Um, that's a conversation that we would then have to have.
Yep, I know one of the things that they've done, and certainly we will ask them to address this, I know that um, our lunch meats, for example, our Boars Head Lunch Meat, um, which tends to be, you know, a higher quality lunch meat, um, so they kind of threw this whole process, the last couple of years, um, they have tried to make improvements in quality that's being used. Um, but maybe some of them are not great quality, maybe it's just something that's, just cuz it's better, doesn't mean it tastes better. Um, so, so we'll definitely ask them to address, um, that when they do their presentation in the fall.
I think it would be helpful for the committee, whatever you decide tonight, if you have specific questions or, um, items that you'd like Kelly to include in her presentation, if you could email Laurel over the summer, just so we can make sure that the presentation is geared towards what you all want to know more about, and not necessarily an overview of the program.
That would be, I think that would be really helpful to inform her work. Matt, I know you had something to say, and we've all been talking for a long time without.
Uh, yeah, no, I would just say that, like, Kelly, in my experience, gives very um, polished and professional presentations, and that actually sort of makes me a little bit nervous, so I, uh, I mean, we have customers, customers are the kids who are eating this food and their parents, and they are not satisfied with the quality of the food, so to say that, like, they're providing high-quality meals, I think is incongruent with what we're hearing. So I would not recommend that we extend the contract, um, I don't know if there's an option to go less than a year, but I really would like to give her an opportunity to, um, convince me that she has a plan for you know, just improving the quality of her product, because I just don't think that there's any other way to sort of look at it, the product is not meeting the standards, it's not even close, it seems like. So, um, but I, but I'm sensitive to the fact that she does give a very good presentation, I always leave her presentations feeling like we're in really good hands, which is why I was so disappointed with the survey, so if there's any way of, of even making this contract six months, I think it would be helpful, I, I'm not opposed to a one-year contract, but I won't vote for four. It's just not, it, it's not compatible with, um, It's just not, it it's not compatible with um with the quality.
Yeah, I agree. I think the question, I mean, to change. Is it more like benchmarking, Matt? Where, I mean, I don't, I guess that's a question. If you can have a six-month contract, what's that renewal look like from a budget perspective? If you were then potentially changing vendors mid-year, is it even possible? Or is it more like um kind of an improvement plan to say, okay, you know, we expect X, Y, or Z? Sort of hard to do that without having allowed her the chance to give the presentation, though.
I think staffing wise too, my recommendation, I totally understand why anyone would hesitate to do a four-year commitment right now. But I think Lisa knows the market of what food service vendors were available to. Give up, meet our needs, but I think um for a staff, from a staffing perspective, we do have a number of employees that worked for. The school district prior to working for Chartwell's. And to be able to say to the employees of the food service department who have been longstanding. That right now it's tenuous and you only have a six-month commitment. I would fear that they would be nervous and potentially need to look for a job elsewhere. So I would, I would just ask, I I hear you um on all this. But to me, to give them less than one year would just put the employees at a disadvantage as opposed to Chartwell's as a company having a chance to. Make some adjustments before we make a long-term commitment.
I agree with the one year too, because um for that reason and a lot of reasons. And I just, I'm, I I guess I'm the outlier. I kind of feel like kids are always going to complain about what's in lunch. But, you know, like maybe to the orange, oh, it's Orange Chicken Day and whatever, and if she wants to buy something extra. I'm the parent putting the money into the account, so I always look up and see what my kids are purchasing. So I kind of feel like we're we're putting more and more responsibility on the schools and more and more complaints upon the schools. So I guess my question is, what is it that people want to see for lunch? I mean, do they just want carrots and hummus? Do they want? Um like, wh- what is not good quality? Would would be a question too, if we're going to get into the weeds, because it is really, really hard to get a food service company. To service a school and to get a decent amount of employees and food and product, and it's a huge deal. So um that being said, I'm happy to go with the one year. I think there are some super valid concerns. Um but I, but I don't think it would be wise to go any less than that.
And I agree with, sorry. I agree with you, Kelly, um which is why I said I don't think we can task these cafeteria employees and things um with more. But I I think it's also quality, but it's like cold lunch is often like Lucky Charms for. And there's not a single nutritious factor in Lucky Charms. I mean, so I agree with you that people are going to complain to complain. But I do think if there's moldy milk and things like that, I've heard my kids had green milk, like their friends would get green milk. Like I think those are the things that, it's not necessarily that I want, you know, like charcuterie boards offered. I just think that there should be maybe a conversation just about quality and and what's considered nutrition. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think that this, I mean personally, I don't think that this is just limited to kids being picky eaters. I think that like I I know adults that then I have just personal experience with at least one adult who has. Seen on a consistent basis the food that's being served and the commentary is not, is is not good. So um. I mean, to me, this is, this isn't any different than if we had a vendor that was like fixing a ceiling and the ceiling was like leaking water. I wouldn't extend that. I wouldn't want to extend that person's contract without giving them an opportunity to. Explain what their plan is. So again, I'm fine with uh with a year contract. I mean, certainly there's been loyalty and um from her, you know, from her and and from Chartwell's. If they've been with us for for fifteen years, but I can't in good conscience. Um go back to the community and say like, you know, we've heard your feedback and we're going to give her another four years. It just doesn't make sense to me. So but I think she's owed an opportunity to pro- to provide her plan. And I don't think I need to say anything more about it. I'll have a lot to say and a lot of questions to ask in the presentation itself.
Yeah, I would agree. So um I guess from a process. The recommendation is written, the memo is written as it is, so can we simply make a motion to um. Have the third food services agreement addendum approved for one year?
So moved, second.
Okay. Matt, am I doing this correctly or is? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, all right, five zero one. And I think it's a, it's going to be, it's going to be really important from our perspective as a committee. To um really be crystal clear about what we're seeking from the presentation, as Danielle said, sooner rather than later. So any thoughts or ideas that people have about what they want to see? Um I guess Danielle, the other piece of this would be that we got the K to twelve insight survey kind of big picture feedback and general themes around this. But given this discussion and that likely discussion that will happen during that meeting. It might be nice to have um more specific information that came specifically related to food services and the text, whatever that was. Um in in full, not just. Overarching.
I did share that with um Kelly, but I can make a report of that for um everyone as well.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think that would be good to include um as part of the pack and materials for us anyway. Leading up as part of this agenda item. Um so I'll put that on my list of things that we can work on to make sure it gets in right away at the fall. And that would, that'll be the same, hopefully, agenda item essentially for Lisa to share what we just voted on around um costing. Okay. All right, Matt, your turn.
So the uh cellphone smart device policy, Dr. Klingman, did you want to um to share the document?
Yes.
So uh while you're pulling it up, I'll just to, just to give some context. So in the spring, the school committee had assigned the policy subcommittee to draft a policy around cellphone. Usage um for the, for the students. It felt like in the meetings where we discussed it, there was um some consensus around. Um directionally limiting students' ability to use their cell phones. There was also some conversation around, you know. Teachers uh consistency with enforcing the rules. I think that's outside of the scope of the policy itself. So the way that the we sort of worked on this was to have uh the principals attend the meeting. And get a sense from each principal how they felt this limitation could and should be enforced at each school. Um so what we did in the policy is carve out. Um each schools as a line item for how they are to handle, how they would wish to handle cellphone usage. Uh for the elementary schools and for Duxbury Middle School, what you're reading in the policy is essentially. What they're asking the students to do now. So with the elementary schools, they expect that if the students do bring phones or smart devices. That they're shut off and they're either in the backpacks all day or in the lockers in the uh in the middle school all day. It was the high school, which is a little bit longer, that had some suggested changes. Which you can um, which you can read there. Uh just a couple of other items is that um we felt like it would be important to underline the fact. That we, this, the district does provide students with equipment now that are specifically used for learning. Um so we wanted that to be in there and then to, you know, create the statement that if you want your kid to come with. A smartphone or a smart device, they can. But if they do, this is our expectation. So at the high school, um the policies, the policy states that um. All personal phone, smart device usage is strictly prohibited during time in the classroom. And while you're out on hall pass during class time. So if you leave the classroom to go to the restroom, that's considered class time, can't use your, your phone. Uh when each, when students enter each classroom, they've got to have their devices turned off. And then they've got to put them in a designated caddy, some sort of container. That all the phones would um would would be in. And then they would retrieve those devices upon exiting the classroom and then do the same thing for the uh for the next period. They can use their uh devices between class periods and during lunch in the, in the cafeteria. And then the, the closing of it essentially says that during the school day. We have certain expectations about the communication features. And that is not only to be followed during time in the building, but during a school-sponsored events. Like if you're at a dance or a field trip uh or whatever. So when you're at, in the school or you're at a school-sponsored events, there are certain rules of the road that you've got to abide by. When you use your, your devices, which you can read there in the parenthetical.
Are we? Sorry, is um. I know they'll be putting cell phones. In like the designated area of the classroom or whatnot. Is that, that watches too? Sorry, I'm reading it again, but like, will they be expected to take off their watches and put them?
Uh yeah, my understanding is yes, unless there's like a health issue where they have to wear their watch for monitoring some sort of condition that they have. But yeah, any smart device includes a smart watch.
Okay, this is really well-written. Thank you for taking, for doing it. I mean. I think middle school might be. Problematic just with. I don't know how big the issue is in middle school, actually, I guess I should say. I think high school has proven to be the biggest issue. So hopefully if we can curb it there, just requiring them to have them powered, I don't. And in their lockers should be okay for middle school.
Yeah, Sarah McGuire said it's not a problem. All the kids are really good about it.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, the student, I know, it's interesting. She says that um I don't disagree with her and I think overarching. Um generally comparatively, that's true. But my understanding is that has gotten progressively worse and what they see is that sixth graders are really great. They follow the rules. Seventh graders are sort of following the rules and then by eighth grade, you start to see them. You know, that is less the case. And again, not, not majority by any means, but um that's just sort of the trajectory as they move through. So and and I'm speaking from student, you know, student experience.
Yeah, and I think the adjustment in middle school will be putting the devices in the lockers. But incoming sixth graders have been trained, if you will, to do that at Alden. Where smart devices all go in their cubbies or whatever. So I think that will be a, a change for perhaps seventh and eighth graders, starting in the fall to be like, oh, yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, Laurel.
No, no, what I was going to say, Matt, and you, I mean, you have middle school too. I think the bigger problem, and this is my overarching. For starters, this policy is really well-written and I appreciate the time. I think my, my question is really um. I'm just going to voice my, and this is my personal feeling on this, is that. This is not going to accomplish what we're seeking to achieve um from my, from or. From my perspective, um and and the reason for that is that. The policy is great, but to Matt's point and his original questions around this whole thing are like, this is the rule in the handbook now. And it's not working. So um I I just, the middle school kids don't use their lockers. My daughter uses, she walks around the whole day with her backpack, and I think the majority of them do, depending on where their team is. And their schedule and all those things, and I think that varies by team and by grade for sure. Um but I guess my fear is that. From my perspective, I feel like it is, there is a time here, um and the community is asking for a line in the sand. And this is not going to accomplish that. So it might be that that's not, this is not the time for this conversation. Um and that's okay. At all.
So the two things I would say is, I I first of all, I think you're right. I mean, one thing that we could do in the middle school is uh. We could suggest that we just put slash backpacks, locker slash backpacks to cover the kids that don't use their lockers. Because that is kind of like a specific situation. As for the um, this is my opinion, is if the, if the edu, if the teachers and, you know, the kid, the. The adults managing the classrooms are not conforming with the policy, then that's uh, that's up to the principal to enforce. And if they're unsuccessful, it's up to Dr. Klingeman to enforce. My expectation would be now that this is enshrined in policy, it creates a statement that we're sort of doubling down on seriousness. And there, there is a little bit of nuance. I mean, you'll remember that in the uh, in the most recent handbook, at least at the high school. There was some language around unless, you know, unless the phone is part of a lesson or something like that. Which I think was, could be used as an excuse. So I, I agree with you. I think that, you know, it it sounds like up to this point. That not all the teachers have been taking the rules seriously, but I wouldn't say that that means that it's not going to happen moving forward. I think that we're sort of shining a light on it. It's been in the clipper. It's now enshrined in policy. Dr. Klingeman has heard from parents and even the student representative in some of the meetings. So I think that it's a, it's a high priority. And I would trust that, that we're going to ensure that we're riding the ship with the teachers. And if the teachers aren't like doing what they're supposed to do, then the teachers are going to have consequences.
I think that having a discretion. Um made some teachers feel as though they could be more lenient with it because it was more discretionary. And I know that our teachers will, if this is a policy that is ultimately um voted on. And um becomes part of our policy manual, that they will, to the best of their ability, follow it. I would um just suggest if, if the middle school concern of the children not using their lockers. Because kids today don't have the same high level of um locker opening skills that we all had. Back in the day where we had to practice, it's very stressful for some kids and they do keep their um books with them. Then we may want to consider saying that um middle school and high school will keep their cellphone or smartwatch in a container as well. And we could ask um Principal McGuire to weigh in on that because I think the problem with keeping phones in backpacks is sneaky behavior. Can I use the bathroom? I snuck my phone out of the backpack when nobody was looking and now, again, we have the same issues we're having. And so um if there's any worry or further conversation that needs to take place because of the lack of locker use for some kids. Then maybe we just have the same language for both secondary.
I think that would, I think that would be really good.
Sorry, go ahead, Matt.
No, no, go ahead, Katie.
Well, no, I just, um, you know, I talked to staff at Waymouth High School who implemented this. And it, the kids just do it now. I think if, if it isn't that expectation, and maybe I'm giving everybody way too much credit. But if, you know, it's, it's pushed down by administration and like this is what's happening and there are containers and phones go in them. And like, there's consistency. Again, I'm trying to give everyone the benefit of the doubt, but I do think this is a large step in the right direction. And if we can do it at the middle and high school level maybe and somehow fund it through the district that we, you know, purchase the same containers for every classroom. I, I think the community has spoken. We got, I did not get a single email that was, I don't want, I might, my child needs their phone. So I, I think, I think it's at least a step in the right direction.
Katie, I agree with you hundred percent. And I think we often like look for reasons why not to do it or make it easier. Or, and I, I agree with you, if we set the expectation. And, you know, like you were saying, Laura, the sixth graders will do it. So that, you know, you start the expectation at sixth grade and now we have freshman academy. Well, guess what? Todd said all the ninth graders are doing it. Next year, the tenth graders. So it's really like the juniors and seniors next year that it'll be a different process for, but big deal. So their teachers now have to collect the phones and it's a mandatory thing. It's not, some teachers do, some teachers don't. Um we just, you know, here's our policy and everybody's going to be held to it. And I think it makes it easier for the teachers instead of letting them sort of flounder.
Well, the policy becomes the bad guy. I think that's the good news. So like the policy becomes the bad guy. For next steps for this, what we could do, Dr. Klingeman, is if you wanted to have um Ms. McGuire. Way in on whether it's feasible to do what the high school's doing, we could then make that. weigh in on whether it's feasible to do what the high school's doing, we could then make that in the second reading. Um, and as a fallback, if for some reason that's not like achievable, like if it's a fallback, we could just put backpack slash excuse me, locker slash backpacks to make it more sort of, you know, achievable. Um, but, you know, I'll leave it. I think we have to leave it to you to figure out how it's going to get enforced, but uh Louisiana just passed a law that's probably going to get changed about putting the ten commandments in every classroom. These are four commandments here, so I wouldn't have a problem with putting this policy on the wall of every classroom. Just to sort of like really make it clear that like, it's like the district is very serious about it.
This is our commandment. And I think.
Yeah, these are our commandments, the cellphone commandments.
Yeah, I think the most telling part of this for me is that this feedback is really coming from the students more than the parents, because I think that there's been some pervasive cheating going on and we have for the most part, really compliant kids that do the right thing. And when you study really hard for a test and you know that there's people in your class cheating, it doesn't matter if you're at Ducksbury Public Schools or you're in college. It's really frustrating. And um no one wants to be the one working so hard for your grades and seeing somebody else cheating and getting the same grade. And I think that with the technology we have nowadays, we just have to adjust with the times because um there's just, it's gotten to the point where this is coming from the students. And I think from what we've heard from them, they're relieved when there's classes where the teacher is very strict about cellphone use and it's not an issue. And their issue is more in the classes where the teachers can be more lenient about it. And so this is really coming from our high schoolers. Um, and so we already know that a lot of our parents in the community put off purchasing a cellphone for their kids until they're fourteen or up. So I think we generally have a community that's very cautious about putting technology in kids' hands until they're ready. And I don't think we're going to get a lot of pushback of, from our parents about being strict in enforcing this. So I hope that this makes a big difference for us, our ability to be able to enforce this consistently.
Yeah, I think you're you're right. And I'm probably putting the cart before the horse um and assuming which I don't usually do, assuming the worst. Um, I guess my my challenge here, and I think maybe I'm out of line in my perception of kind of our responsibility um as a district. And I I think the cheating thing is really a really disappointing and that's an academic component of this. Um, but I think what we're seeing across the board is we know that kids having access to this technology for the number of hours that they do, no matter what they're doing with it, is really bad. It's just bad. Um, there's, I have I don't think there is any research that is telling us that it's a good thing. And so my only um sort of in being the heavy is we talk so much about social emotional health and we want to focus on social emotional and all these things and where we've changed the way that we do school with a focus on this. And that is sort of my lens on this. As the cheating thing is something we can deal with. That's very easy. Take it out of their hands during the classroom. Um, but I think the sort of more strict policy of you know, a lot of schools, which is that they're they're taking them in the morning and the kids don't get them back until the afternoon. And that, and when they leave the building and what that means is that they're not using them at lunch. They're not using in between classes. They're not on social media. They're not taking videos and pictures in bathrooms and doing all these things that we know. And and I say this because I think my challenge in listening at school council and the time and energy that the administrators are spending around behavior management that is specifically related to the fact that kids have their phones during the school day is really disappointing to me. And I think it's taking away from their ability to do what they should be doing and spending the time focusing on regular behavior management instead of going down, you know, endless bullying investigations around social media that's happening at school. And so that's a really long soapbox that I'm on, but I just um this will certainly address the cheating and it's going to be the beginning of of kind of dealing with a problem that we've identified in the district from an academic perspective. Um, but I just it feels like we're sort of missing a a piece of um what we know and understand about about phones and and use in schools and the effect it has on on their experience in that building. Um, but again, that that's probably for another day.
Laurel, I'm with you one thousand percent. And when we were going to start writing this policy, that was my hope, honestly. Um, principal feedback, they didn't really seem to be that on board with it, which was a surprise to me. Or maybe I'm misreading them, but they thought this would just be a great fix. Um. So maybe the hope is we start with this and if it goes well, we can expand it. That would be my hope because I agree with everything you said.
Yeah, and maybe it's it's, you know, slow, slow roll instead of going in um and steamrolling. And so that's okay. Let's let's start with this and see how, see how it goes. I do think that I I would definitely support the idea of the middle school being a little bit more like the high school so that that sort of habit starts then. And that way you get them when they're still compliant in sixth grade and it just becomes part of their norm instead of another change as they come into to freshman year.
Yeah, and so that.
Oh, sorry.
To that point, Matt, I don't, I mean, do we need to get Sarah McGuire's feedback on that? Or can we just say this is the policy that we want?
No, well, I.
I guess that's the, you know, because she she seemed to think they were all using their lockers and it would be fine. There were a few kids who would forget their combinations. I mean, I didn't.
No, they're not using their. They're not using their lockers at all.
But I feel like she as principal didn't think it was a problem. So, yeah, it would be good to get her her feedback or to our feedback, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's what we were saying. So like, I think, I think the plan is to um just socialize the idea of making the middle school rule, like the what the high school rule is, just to get her feedback on it before we make a decision. And um and then implement it if she thinks it's cool.
And what if she?
I can ask Sarah to watch this portion of the school committee meeting recording and provide us with feedback. And my only follow up question was um to the policy subcommittee, what was your hope of being able to do a second reading of this and timing? Was that something that you intended to do this summer um prior to the start of school so we can communicate this out? Or was this something that you had wanted to um put to September for a final decision?
Well, I think in our meeting, we had talked about trying to schedule a another quick virtual meeting so that we could finalize it. So that the principals are prepared to enforce it and I think we've already uh approved the handbooks, but I think that there was also some language just around ensuring that the handbook is consistent with this policy. So I don't know how that would work in practical terms, but um I think the short answer is, yeah, it would be great to sort of have the secondary have this sort of set in stone well in advance of the beginning of the school year. So I would vote for like to do to do the second reading at another Zoom meeting.
Okay. And I think that when you vote yes or no on this implementation of the cellphone policy, you could also vote at that time to say, and you also approve for this change to be made to the school handbooks as necessary. And that way it's not another step that needs to come forward.
Yep.
Yeah, it's just referenced in the hand, the policy would be referenced in the handbook, right, to say that's what dictates practice.
They might, they probably have a cellphone section in the handbooks that this would, um, they'd reiterate the expectation because it is so student specific as opposed to just referencing a policy.
I see. Okay, yeah. Um, should, I guess, Matt, to your point, it should be like a public Zoom meeting that's scheduled as opposed to having it be part of our agenda for the workshop because that's not as visual.
Well, I would vote to have it a public, whatever we do should be a public meeting because theoretically and also I think practically you want to have the, give the um, the community an option to come in and speak about it in public comment.
Yeah, okay. But Zoom would be.
Zoom's fine.
Reasonable, okay.
Yep.
Um, okay. I I'll um, I guess, when, when do you imagine, you guys didn't, you don't have another policy subcommittee meeting, so this would just be kind of a quick touch base, maybe also over Zoom, I guess, or or whatever. Um, to do the.
Whenever you schedule the next meeting, I will, I could be prepared to have Sarah share a memo with you ahead of time so that you knew what would be discussed at your second reading, if that, if that works.
Well, I was gonna say, it it would be, I think maybe this is what you're saying, Doc Klingman, but if what I would suggest is go right to Ms. McGuire, ask her about the rule, right? If she can do it, let me know and I'll update the language to reflect it for the second reading. If she can't, then, you know, we either have a fallback decision where we say backpack slash lockers or in the second reading, we could have Ms. McGuire attend the meeting and we can ask her some questions and talk about. But my sense is my guess is she'll probably be able to do it, but yeah, that's how I would do it. So I, so if you can do that in advance of whenever we have this follow up meeting, I'll just be prepared to have already updated the language.
Great. Okay, so the follow up meeting will just be the second reading with this.
Exactly.
Already is discussed essentially. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, all right, great. Um, okay, so we'll Danielle, let let me know or when or scheduling. I mean, if it's Zoom, it should be relatively quick and easy to get people on.
Yeah, maybe we could give it two weeks or just try to find a date. Um, maybe the, if this Thursday at five o'clock time worked for the committee or we could, you could let Laurel um know, we could pick a date early in July to finalize this decision.
Yeah, Kathy, you head out on the the week of the eighth, right? I mean, we still have a majority without Kathy, but I think those middle three weeks are tricky. So ideally, if we could get it by next Thursday, um, maybe before she heads out of town and before you go on vacation. That would be ideal.
Next Thursday at the same time, I believe, works for me, but again it's your, you're the most important um people voting on this. Let me say next twenty, so it's um.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seventh.
Date, yeah.
Yep.
Matt, are you, does everybody is nodding? Sort of, yes? Kelly, you can't?
I I'm hoping I can.
Okay.
All right, Cap.
Okay, um.
I like, I can, I will probably just, I'm at a baseball field, right? Like, I'll probably, Lock's traveling on next week, so I'll just be like this again, but I'm hap- I can always just call in if that's okay with you guys.
Okay, but Kathy, you can't make it at all, even if remote?
Uh, correct.
Okay.
Um, I I should be able to do remote. Yeah, here. They're having wildfires right now, Kathy. I'm nervous for you.
Oh, God, thanks a lot.
Just make, I'm sure they'll make sure your area is safe.
It'll be fine. They'll have hose down. Um, what about the Tuesday? Tuesday, the twenty fifth, is there any chance that works instead?
No, no, that's my birthday. I'm going to Boston.
Woo, okay. Woo, um, all right, well, Kathy, if it won't hurt your feelings, um, we, Matt, we can pers-
Can we? All we need, all we need is a quorum. We just need three numbers.
Okay, I just didn't want anyone to feel like we didn't believe your vote was important. So Kathy, if you're okay with it, we'll proceed. We've already discussed it. I think it's essentially just validation of of the change. Um, and if you had any concerns, you could certainly email them to me in advance. With the new, with the new.
No, I I think it's really important we implement before school starts so that we have time to get, you know, everybody has the message out and we start on the the right foot. Might not be the final foot, but this is definitely a step, in my opinion, in the right direction.
Yes. Okay, Thursday, five P M, quick Zoom. Hopefully we can get everything wrapped up by then. Okay, anything else? Anyone? It might be below ninety tomorrow. Maybe, there's a chance, just a few degrees. Um, all right, can I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chat next Thursday.